Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Will you please stand and drink? And the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we need that statement back.
Statement of adequate notice, under the Sunshine Law, adequate notice in accordance with the Open Land Meetings Act, was provided on June 11th, 2025, of this meeting's date, time, and location. The agenda was mailed to the Cranberry Press at Home News Tribune, posted on the Township Bulletin Board, mailed to those requesting personal notice, and filed with the municipal clerk. All right, roll call, please. Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. El Madawi?
Here.
Mr. Giddings?
Here.
Ms. Kineum?
Here.
Right, Mr. Phil, Mr. Ucelli?
Here.
Mr. Paul and Mr. Stewart are here. Mr. Whitman?
Here.
Thank you, we will record and check.
Okay. All right, again, thank you, everybody, for coming in tonight. We will be discussing our fourth round housing element and fair share plan township of Cranberry Master Plan. I have a couple housekeeping items tonight that I want to just throw out to everybody. So when you come up to make public comment, then you kind of know what we're looking for. The first one is, we're only going to be addressing the plan at hand. We're not looking at other plans, talking about other plans, talking about changes to this plan. So if you have comments, it'll be addressed to this plan. Second item, we're not looking at any other properties, substituting properties or anything like that. If you come up and bring a name of a property, that's fine, I don't care. We're going to put it on the list, and it'll be evaluated for our round five of Ford Biousing Plan, which we will have one in the future. One in the future, starting in 2035, okay? At a point when I do open up the meeting for public comment, I'm going to leave it open 50 minutes now. People still would like to talk. I'm going to do blocks of 15s thereafter. And at that point in time, if we're all talked out, then I'll close the public portion of the meeting. We're going to record questions as from the presentation America's going to make. So we're going to try to answer all those questions the best we can at the end of her set, at the end of her session for the public. At that point in time, I'm going to open up to the board for any further comments that they may have. And at that time, I'll close the board question, and then we'll proceed with a vote. And another final note. And I say this with all sincerity. I have, I really would employ everybody to be civil here today. I have seen too much stuff being floated around in the ethos, ethical stuff. And that's not our town. And frankly, I'm just a little disgusted about it. There is no call for threats or horrible language against board members or anybody on the township. I really employ everybody to be civil and be yourself as good Cranberry citizens should conduct themselves. Okay, with that in mind, we're going to open it up for Mary Beth to make her发言.
Mary Beth, I'm going to swear you in. Do you want to raise your right hand? I swear that this testimony that you're about to give before the sports, the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help God. Hope we can hear this. Well, you're on mute.
My apologies. Yes, Jer, I do swear. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. My name is Mary Beth Lonergan. I'm a principal partner at Clark Caden Hens for an affordable housing planning firm, architecture firm, landscape architecture and planning. I am a licensed planners. I've been the township's affordable housing planner since 2005. I have an affordable housing expertise for over 30 years. I began my career in affordable housing, working for the Council on Affordable Housing, COA. For the last 22 years, I've worked at Clark Caden Hens, where I am a municipal affordable housing planner, similarly being the township of Cranberry's affordable housing planner. I also served the Superior Court as a special agent, and that term used to be referred to as court master. I serve in over 50 Superior Court matters across the state. Tonight, for the planning board's consideration is your fourth round housing element and fair share plan. As you all know, the housing element is a master plan element. What I'd like to do is I'd like to summarize the draft fourth round housing element fair share through a PowerPoint presentation. And I'd ask my colleague to please start the PowerPoint. And is that, can everyone here be okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So let's go to the first slide, please. Let's go to the second slide, please. So many of you are aware of the state and court affordable housing history in New Jersey. It emanates from the Mount Laurel doctrine. In 1975, the initial mountain case was decided by the New Jersey Supreme Court, and the court mandated that each developing municipality provide a realistic opportunity through a cheap land use regulations for a variety of housing types, including housing for low and moderate households. In 1983, after a series of starts and stops and significant litigation in Superior Court and as well as the appellate division, the Supreme Court issued its second important case decision in the Mount Laurel doctrine. And in that 1985 case, now known as the Mount Laurel II decision, the Supreme Court reaffirmed the constitutional obligation for towns to provide affordable housing, specifically tying that constitutional obligation to municipalities' ability to zone. In addition to the affirmation, the Supreme Court also created as part of this Mount Laurel II decision, a court remedy. And that court remedy, I know many of you are aware, it's called a builder's remedy. I'll provide more details about builder's remedy in a moment. More recently, in 2015, the Supreme Court decided what's now known as the Mount Laurel IV decision. And as part of that decision, it highlighted a reminder that municipalities' power to zone varies the constitutional obligation for a town to address its fair share affordable housing obligation. As part of the earlier 1975, 1983 decision of the Mount Laurel case law, the legislature enacted an alternative to the court process, and it enacted the Fair Housing Act back in 1985. This was clearly in bonds to the significant court cases in the towns trying to address or being sued for not addressing their affordable housing obligations. The Fair Housing Act, what's as established, set up the Council on Affordable Housing, COA. And COA was, for a few decades, was the administrative alternative to proceedings before the Superior Court. Next slide, please. What's important for Cranberry Township and really all municipalities across the state is for this process as set up in the Fair Housing Act to protect, to provide protection from court-imposed builder rate lawsuits. And specifically, the court requires a municipality to adopt and endorse a housing element and fair share plan. Without immunity, towns may be sued. Typically, a builder's remedy, as many of you are aware, is a high-density residential zoning development proposal with typically just 15% or 20% affordable housing, not 100% affordable housing. The builder's remedy threat may also permit a judge to order that multiple sites be utilized to address a municipality's obligation, and multiple sites may be rezoned. The court, there are a number of examples where the court may also take away review powers from the planning. Next slide, please. Cranberry Township's affordable housing history, the township has had decades of addressing its fair share obligation in the first round. And the first round is really from the 1980s. This COA Council on Affordable Housing granted and certified the township's first round housing element and fair share plan. And that COA certification was from 1989. After that, in the 1990s, really the second round plan developed by the township, that plan was certified by COA in 1996. Both rounds, both the first round and the second round, referred to as the prior round obligation. And as you can see, prior round obligation was 217 prospective needs, and I'll provide more details in just a bit. The third round obligation and the third round time period began back in 1999, and it went through 30th, 2025, which is less than a week away. In this long extended time period for the third round, there was significant litigation, and many of you may be aware or were involved in the township trying to address COA's growth share, that their initial third round attempt at a new methodology. The growth share concept, where it was every residential or non-residential development would generate an affordable housing obligation, that was invalidated by the Supreme Court in this Laurel IV decision. Again, that decision was from 2015. In that decision, the Supreme Court ruled that, and found that COA was non-functioning, and the court, the Supreme Court, brought affordable housing matters back to the Superior Court system. Early on, in, after the 2015 decision, the court envisioned that there would be a central determination of affordable housing numbers, but that really did not occur for course. And as part of the third round, the early part of the third round after the 2015 decision, there were significant settlement agreements to determine a municipality's affordable housing obligation. And in the third round, these settlements were typically with Fair Share Housing Center, FSHC. And Fair Share Housing Center is a statewide affordable housing advocacy group. About 375 total third round settlement agreements were entered, and Cranberry was one of those municipalities. And initially, Fair Share Housing Center had run a series of, or a set of third round fair share obligations. And they initially suggested that Cranberry Township's third round fair share should be 01200 affordable housing units. The township disagreed, fought that, and settled with Fair Share Housing Center at a capped obligation of 260. You'll hear that this reference to a capped obligation, and this is directly right from the Fair Housing Act, which set up a series of requirements and permissions for municipalities. And in this case, the 20% cap related to Cranberry Township is also known as the cap to fight against a drastic alteration of a community. The township's settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center, third round settlement agreement, was approved by the court, and the township received the equivalent of COA's certification, and the court issued a judgment of compliance request back in 2016. And that third round judgment of compliance request is still provides the township right through the end of the third round, again, which is in one week, provides the township with immunity from builder rate lawsuits. Next slide, please. Really, before diving into the background specifics, it's always helpful for everyone to take a step back and just discuss and hear what is affordable housing. And up on the screen are 2025 income limits, and you'll see that the household income level of moderate income, that is a household that earns no more than 80% of the region's median income. And you can see, we're showing one-person households on up to five-person households, and you can see that range. Low-income households are households that make no more than 50% of the region's median income. And lastly, the very low-income category is for households earning no more than 30% of the region's income. And this very low-income category came about in an amendment to the Fair Housing Act from 2008. And you can see those income limits ranging from 32,000, a little over 32,000 for a one-person household, up almost 50,000 for a five-person household. The, in addition to the income limits, it's important to understand that affordable housing in New Jersey is de-restricted affordable housing. As part of the amended Fair Act that I'll go into a little bit more in detail, the new Fair Act requires affordable rental housing to have controls on affordability for at least 40 years. Affordable housing also must be administered by experienced administrative aides. These experienced professionals provide affirmative marketing, affirmative advertising of the affordable units. Random selection is required. Income qualification is required. And the administrative agents really oversee new tenants coming in. The administrative agent enforces affordable controls. They must also follow the Uniform Housing Affordability Controls, UHAC. That's a series of regulations that are implemented by the New Jersey Housing Mortgage Finance Agency. And lastly, the administrative agent assists in providing annual monitoring. Next slide, please. The new affordable housing law was enacted in March of last year. It amended the Fair Housing Act and implemented the fourth round requirements. Just some of the highlights of the fourth round, the new fourth round law. The law abolished the Council on Affordable Housing, COA. The new law instituted a new court-based program. It's technically called the Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program. And this is a program that's in the administrative office of the courts. And it has, it issued an administrative directive. And generally speaking, the program is set up to address any challenges. Initially, the program addressed a series of challenges to fourth round municipal obligations. And will also review and mediate any challenges to a municipality's fourth round housing element and fair share plan. The new law that's amended through the Fair Housing Act also set up a series of specific deadlines for various entities, including municipalities, to meet. The other requirement was that the new law required the Department of Community Affairs, DCA, to prepare fourth round affordable housing obligations, and also required new regulations from state agencies. Next slide, please. Some new deadlines that have, most of them have already come and gone, but the initial deadline, and really, most towns waited, needed to see what was going to be their fourth round affordable housing number. That came out from the DCA, Department of Community Affairs, back in late October last year. DCA provided fourth round numbers for all towns across the state. The January 31st, 2025 deadline was an important deadline for Cranberry Township to address, and it required, the deadline from the Fair Housing Act required that towns adopt binding resolutions to address, sorry, committing to address their fair share fourth round obligations. Also, a deadline of February 15th was set forth for towns, for all towns to address their monitoring of units, all existing affordable housing units in the town, as well as existing trust fund collections and expenditures. And lastly, we are, again, just away from a very, very important deadline for towns to adopt and submit their fourth round housing plans. A little twist to this deadline. In actuality, town must submit, by law, its adopted fourth round plan within 48 hours of adoption to both the Superior Court and to the program. Next slide, please. DCA's Department of Community Affairs, number four, Cranberry Township, includes a two-part fourth round obligation, includes a need or rehabilitation share of zero. And we're really not going to spend any additional time on the rehab share. What's important number for the township is its prospective need number. And the prospective need number is, again, capped, 265. But that cap was reduced from the initial obligation set by DCA of 314. Again, township was able to take advantage of the cap down to 265. This 265 prospective need is based on three average factors. And I'm not going to get into all the details, but suffice to say, the three factors that's set forth clearly in the law is that DCA was charged with utilizing the three factors. One was non-residential valuation. One is land capacity. And the last one was income capacity. Or it made me easier to think of it as the general wealth of a community as part of the region. You should know that Cranberry is in Region 3. Region 3 had about, well, had a total no obligation of a little over 11,000 affordable housing units as part of the entire statewide obligation of a little 85,000 affordable housing statewide for the fourth round. And then Cranberry's share of that is 265 units. Next slide, please. As many of you are aware, Cranberry Township addressed its initial January 31st, 2025 deadline in adopting and committing to address its 265-unit fourth round prospective need. Township also filed its fourth round declaratory judgment action, DJ action. And that's simply just an action to bring the township into the Superior Court process. On March 14th of this year, the Superior Court approved and fixed the township's fourth round numbers. That court order of approval was issued as there were no objections to the township's resolution. And lastly, the township did address its statutory required monitoring. Next slide, please. You're all aware that the fourth round housing fair share plan is key to, it must address both the third round, sorry, both the prior round and the third round, as well as the fourth round. And the last thing, just to point out here, and I think I heard someone ask the question a little earlier. The fourth round is a 10-year time period and starts July 1st of this year and goes to June 30th of 2035. Next, please. I'd like to spend a little bit of time on the prior round chart just to put in perspective. And one thing, what you're seeing here is the means, the compliance measures that the township took that first round and the second round combined, again, into this prior round. And the first thing listed there is RCA. It's a Regional Convention Agreement. That specifically was an ability for towns such as Cranberry Township and many, many other towns transferred funds as a sending town and sent funds to a receiving town for rehabilitation and construction of affordable housing in the region. The Fair Housing Act had previously permitted RCA's, although early in the third round, they were eliminated. But previous to this, the township had entered into two RCA's, one in the first round, one in the second round. And really, RCA's provided the township tremendous flexibility in addressing its fair share obligation. As you can see here, there's a number of sites listed that Cranberry Associates had developed over the years and did a nice job for the township and on behalf of the township in addressing many sites, not only within the village, but also on the outskirts of the village to address the township's fair share obligation. Having this RCA, which permitted the town to address half of it, half of its obligation, the township had a more manageable fair share obligation with which to have CHA provide, you can see some of the developments, I should say, 100% affordable housing development was on a smaller scale, anywhere from 15 to 20. A few other main points I wanted to address from the prior round. There were two group homes. Group homes are credited by the bedroom. And also, the township was just one of a handful of towns that received what was called a substantial compliance reduction. And that was because the township had specific And that was um because the township had specifically and, and al- almost fully asked its first round obligation and then received a thirteen unit reduction. And lastly, um, on the prior round chart, it's important to um remind the public as, as well as newer board members, that the township has always maximized bonuses. And in this case, in the prior round, the township maximized rental bonuses of fifty-five and, and that was for, and the acknowledgement of the township hosting affordable rental units. Uh, the next few slides are of photos of the prior round um affordable housing units, most of which were developed by CHA, Cranberry Housing Associates. And you can see, uh, really view housing along Bergen Drive, Dancer Drive. And, and one, one thing that I always um thought highly of what CHA has done is that oftentimes the, the units uh just blend right into the, and, and could be in some cases uh just large single-family homes, I mean, the appearance of. And go ahead and just uh show some of more of the slides, please. And you can see um a, a, a more recent development along Old Cranberry Road. And I think there's one more slide. And you can see the uh Parkside Event Place, as well as the uh Village Senior Housing, imported senior affordable rental housing as well. On the, for the third round, um, again, the uh township entered into a settlement agreement with Fair Housing Center, um, and the court accepted the capped perspective need obligation of two hundred and sixty. And, and that, uh, that cap was initially back in the third round, that was based on occupied housing units. It's, it's been changed for the fourth round, and I'll go over that. And what, which really highlights or important highlights for the third round is the large surplus from the prior round. Um, and this, and it, it did help that the township had access to RCAs. Um, you'll see that although uh RCAs um were previously eliminated, for the purpose of this crediting, um, towns are required to name any, any, and so the um, some of the surplus RCA credits are listed here, as well as uh CHA's uh family for sale of affordable housing of thirty units along Bergen, uh Dancer and South Main. In um, in addressing part of the third round affordable housing obligation, uh, you'll see additional uh one hundred percent affordable housing developments for both family affordable, I'm sorry, family uh lower moderate income households, as well as senior individual households. And you'll see a few surplus CHA credits for Old Cranberry Road, as well as a new unit nearby, the Chris Miller House. And um, a third round site that um is now called Applewood Court, and many of you may remember it fondly as uh the Route one thirty D site. Um, but this site is um, you see with now thirty-two affordable family rental units, you can see that the CHA sites um got, got a bit bigger um in, in the third round from the earlier um bit smaller sizes. With the elimination of RCAs, Regional Contribution Agreements, the township had to pivot and um start to work with um tax credit, low, low-income housing tax credit developers. And, and part of the reason for this was, and really made it um difficult for many, many towns across the state, including just specifically in Middlesex County, was that the Middlesex County Superior Court Judge um in charge of the earlier settlement agreements with Fair Housing Center was, was to limit one hundred percent affordable housing sites to just two, um, maybe, maybe three, but it was really almost a hard um, a hard cap. And so that really forced the township and many, many towns across, again, across the state to pivot to um larger one hundred percent affordable housing. And in the um, the, the township needed to address ninety affordable housing and determined to provide those ninety affordable housing units on one site. And, and that's the Ingerman site um that's listed here as a portion of it is family affordable units, the Willow's site of twenty-four, and just a portion is credited in the third round, but Birchwood uh was sixty-six total housing units, including uh senior and special needs units. Um, so this was really the start of the township having to um change from, you know, smaller uh fifteen, twenty, thirty units with, with, with the CHA and having to um provide, having a limit on just two, um, uh, again, possibly three affordable one hundred percent housing sites, um, really was not going to permit to, to work with CHA on three or four, potentially more additional th- third round sites. So, the township um started the efforts in the third round to work with um an experienced tax credit uh developer, and that developer was Ingerman. And again, um, they sought funding from uh HMFA Housing Mortgage Agency. And I'll provide a little bit more details on, on the tax credit program in, in just a bit. The township assisted uh both CHA in purchasing uh the third round sites uh at Applewood Court, and that was back in two thousand and seven. Uh, and also, the township assisted Ingerman in acquiring the um what's known as the, the Birchwood site, and that site is along uh Route one thirty, on the, on the west side of Route one thirty. Um, and that was the former Pulse Auto Garage site. These two sites, the Applewood Court site along um Route one thirty on the west side, as well as the Willow's and Art and Birchwood site, uh, and Ingerman were two existing, or two sites that were rezoned from highway commercial to uh low, or to residential to be able to help the township with fair share obligation. Lastly, you'll see uh a few inclusionary development and redevelopment sites. The, the seven affordable, total affordable units were uh created as part of the High Point Redevelopment Site, um, and specifically as part of the multifamily development at Cranberry Commons, where six, seven are addressing the third round. And also, the township entered into a settlement agreement with Toll Brothers for a payment in lieu of construction at the senior site. Um, and that, that is depicted here, um, and, and that site was the former uh Bertinick um site. You'll see in the next few slides, there are photos of the, some of these third round sites. Including uh Cranberry Commons and Applewood Court. As well as the Ingerman site, uh, the Willow's and, and Birchwood. Thanks, let's uh go to the next site. So, the uh, this just is a quick reminder that again, the fourth round proceed the twenty percent cap, and um now per the amended Fair Housing Act, it's twenty percent of total households uh not occupied, not total occupied housing units. And as you can see here, the twenty-tenses um uh shows one thousand three hundred and twenty-three households in the township, twenty percent of which, that, that's where the two sixty-five comes from for the fourth round. And the next slide, please. Um, the new amended Fair Housing Act has various requirements in for towns to address its fourth obligation. And per the new law, um, the township, specific to Cranberry Township, the township can provide a maximum of fifty-nine affordable senior units towards the fourth round perspective need. Township can request a maximum of sixty-six bonuses, um, and does require at least one hundred family affordable units. Uh, with these parameters in mind, the township began searching for sites that would present a realistic opportunity um by, you know, June twenty twenty-five for, for planning collusion. And um again, the, the realistic opportunity um that is directly from the Mount Laurel doctrine, it's a, it's a requirement uh for towns specific, in specific to Cranberry Township, township really had to search for sites that would, you know, enable this housing plan before you tonight to have the defense of the drug, uh, the realistic opportunity. And, and, and that is seen in uh with sites currently in the sewer service area, um, not currently preserved as open space or farmland and, and all in uh smoke, smart growth areas, uh such as Planning Area Two. And uh next slide, please. There's going to be a series of uh overall maps, really help um everyone visualize the developments facing the township. And, and this first map, you can see that uh it's an aerial map of the township, and you'll see the, the blue depicts um DEP, Department of Environment, for two wetlands. Um, you clearly can see um the, the farm, uh, the, the current pattern of the western of the township, um, with, with the ground farms, um, the central, um, it's, it's a little difficult to see, but um, you know, the central corridor of the community residential development and, and focused on um historic village of, of Cranberry. Um, east of Route one thirty, um, the, the, this is, this picture truly tells the story here, you see uh the significant warehouse and commercial businesses um east of Route one thirty, and they're depicted, you can see the um, the rooftops, uh, you know, white rooftops, gray, darker gray, um, and also some pretty significant wetland areas um in the southeastern portion of, of the township. But um, you know, just, you know, truly large warehousing, um. So I will, what we're gonna uh skip now to the second constraints map. And this is um, was to just really highlight a deal, uh, specific development constraints. And the green is um preserved land, uh, the vast majority of preserved land in the township is preserved farmland, and that's, again, that's depicted in green and uh clearly is a large part of the western portion of, of the township. Um, the preserved farmland, um, as you can see, west, west of the village here, um, the, there's large swaths of contiguous farmland, you know, contiguous preserved farmland. Really helps to form of what's depicted in uh the, the township's twenty-ten master plan, as well as the twenty-nineteen reexamination report of the uh goal and objective township to create a hard edge um along the, along the village. The purple is showing sewer service area, and um this is a really important development parameter for the township and, and its development capabilities for any development, as well as to address its constitutional obligations. Uh, next slide. You can see, um, just take, take, take a minute to really go back and forth from each of these maps. It's uh, you start your eyes, you know, start to go, oh, there's, you know, wh- what's this on the west side that's not preserved, you know, um, take your eyes over and up to the north there near South of Brunswick, you can see a lot of that sweat, you know, just significant deep um wetland areas. And um, and then the, you know, just looking at the uh sanitary sewer service area, again, purple, and you have your eyes go back and forth, and you see from um that the existing developed portion of the township, of the residential development on the corridor there of uh, you know, the, the, the village residential development, north of the village, as well as the south of the village, um, down to the outskirts of, I think that's shadow. Um, and you'll see between North Main Street, Main Street, and then over to Route one thirty and beyond to the east, you can see, and you can just go back and forth, and you can see the significant of the belt, you know, already developed areas of the township um that are, that are um a part, part of the sewer service area. And in the southeast corner of the community, you can see that it appears that DEP, as they have done in many towns, they cut back some of the sewer service area because of uh wetlands. So, the um, while we're still on these two, on these two maps, I wanted to just now um bring us back to the, the process that the township and the, and its consultants um utilize these kinds of um of maps to try to focus on um how the township could address its two hundred and sixty-five unit fourth round obligation. And the township um and, and its team looked at over fifty possible sites. Again, um, uh, these sites had to present a realistic opportunity. Um, we, we checked individual maps, um, all, you know, again, the township team, you know, kept to see, was a site in, uh, in the existing sewer service area? Was it in PA Two, the smart, smart growth area that pretty much reflects the sewer service area? Um, it couldn't be overly entirely constrained like some of these wetland areas. The sites had to be big enough to accommodate um a, a small number of one hundred percent affordable housing sites, uh, I mean, relatively uh small number, but um, so in this case, um, the sites include a twenty-four unit small development um to be uh developed by CHA with uh DCA funding, Department of Community Affairs funding, as well as a senior site um of sixty units to be developed through tax credit financing, and its one hundred family affordable units to be developed also through tax credit financing and, and, and funding. Also, it was important as part of the search for tool sites was um, they had to, the overall program had to be cost-effective for, for the township. Sites not in a sewer service area um wouldn't be currently found to be realistic. Um, it could easily take DEP It could easily take DEP, in some instances, you know, two to three years to make a determination on for an expansion of a sewer service area. And ultimately, DEP may deny such a request. So it was very important for the township team and for the planning board to have a definite affordable housing plan now. Next slide, please. These are the details of the township plan to its fourth round prospective need that I'm sure many of you have seen. But I do want to remind you that the township, again, did not have a fourth round present need or rehabilitation share. So the fourth round prospective need, you'll see that in the, there's a third round surplus details. And unlike the prior round plan, which had a significant surplus from prior round going into the third round, there's a much smaller surplus going from the third round into the fourth round, just because of the, well, for a variety of reasons, but somewhat just because of the elimination of RCA. So it required, through one hundred percent development, required significant township outlay of not only affordable housing trust funds, but also the township had significant bonding requirements to assist the creation of one hundred percent affordable housing sites. You'll see as part of the surplus that CHA has, Cranberry Housing Associates, CHA has worked with Eden Group Home Provider to provide two new group homes. One's in existence and one is in development stage. And the three main one hundred percent affordable developments, the family affordable site at one-two-three-four South River Road, total of one hundred and thirty units, can be developed in two phases, one phase of seventy-two and the second phase fifty-eight affordable units. The CHA Cranberry Commons site, that's, this is a site which I'll get into more details in a moment. But the CHA site, again, to be funded, hopefully, fingers crossed, funded by the Department of Community Affairs, is for twenty-four total affordable units, specifically family affordable rental units. And then lastly, site at one-two, twelve-seventy-four South River Road, sixty senior and supportive housing. Lastly, this chart shows the hoped-for and pending extensions of controls. This really the township must wait for revised, final, permanent unit housing affordability controls to understand the full ability to get extensions of controls. And lastly, just on the overall means to address the prospective need. Again, as in every round, the township maximizes its bonus capability and area requests. And in this case, for the town, it's no different. But the township will maximize fourth round bonuses as all does in tribute to the one-two-three-four South River Road site. Next slide, please. This is an aerial map of the Cranberry, CHA Cranberry Commons site. You can see that this is the remaining undeveloped portion, again, of the High Point redevelopment. And this is approximately one acre. It's adjacent to the Cranberry Commons mixed use that also includes seven affordable family rental units. You can see this at the corner of Old Trenton Road and South Main Street. There will be twenty-four affordable family rentals produced here. And CHA has entered into an option to purchase the site with the site owner. CHA Administrative Agent is Piazza and Associates, and they truly are the best in the state at administrative agent duties. CHA's financial profile anticipates that development costs, total development costs of these twenty-four affordable units will be a little less than ten million. And again, CHA will seek funding from DCAs, again, the Department of Community Affairs, a small development program and then specifically set up to address developments of twenty-five affordable units or less. And it's funded through real transfer tax. And it's funded through the fiscal year of June twenty twenty-five to, July twenty twenty-five to June twenty twenty-six. This site, next slide, please. The CHA site is fully discussed and described in the draft plan. I believe that the, and find that the CHA family affordable site does present a realistic opportunity to produce affordable housing, the site in an existing sewer service area in the Planning Area Two of the state plan. And Planning Area Two is the preferred location. Whether Planning Area One or Planning Area Two, they are the preferred location for the production of affordable housing. The township will enter into an agreement with CHA to develop, assist in developing the site. And CHA has the ability to acquire this thing. The site also per COGS regulations, and these regulations were specifically appealed by the Superior Court, I'm sorry, by the Supreme Court, and also reflected specifically in the amended Fair Housing Act, which directs to utilize COGS regulations. And these regulations require sites to be available, approvable. And in case in this site, it would be approvable through an amendment to the existing redevelopment plan, where the site is developable and suitable, again, as the site is in the sanitary sewer service area and also the water service area. In both sewer and water systems throughout the township, there are, there's capacity in both systems to serve not only this site, but all of the affordable housing mechanisms in the township. Next slide, please. This is the second of the one hundred, proposed one hundred percent affordable housing site. This is twelve-seventy-four South River Road. Again, this is for a total of sixty affordable units, five senior units and five supportive housing units. You can see that this site is along the southern edge of South River Road, right to the north of Route one thirty, or at the intersection of Route one thirty. And you can see across Route one thirty on the west side is Applewood Court, one hundred percent affordable housing development. The township, as far as means as its availability, in May of this year, the township adopted ordinance to acquire the site, whether through, or either, actually, either through negotiations or condemnation. And if it is via eminent domain, the township would pay the fair market value for the land. The Walters is the chosen experienced tax credit developer of the two tax credit one hundred percent affordable housing sites in the plan. And this site will be either rezoned or will be, or will address the redevelopment statute. And this site will be, is previously rezoned from non-residential to multifamily residential. Per COGS rules, we investigated a SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, listing of a structure on site as potentially historic. And although there was a nineteen ninety-two survey listed, listing a principal building on the site that's potentially eligible for historic designation, this building has not been formally designated by either the, I'm sorry, by the township or, and it's not on the state or federal historic registry. The financial pro forma provided for this site shows a total development of just a straight under nineteen million dollars for the site. And this does not include land costs at this time. Walters, again, the tax credit developer known as the Walters Group, will see the competitive nine percent tax credits from the HMFA, Housing Workers Finance Agency. And I'd like to just provide a little bit more information on the tax credit program. Tax credits, specifically low-income housing tax credits, are a federally funded program for developers. They sell the tax credits, often getting a dollar for every tax credit that they sell, sometimes a little bit more sometimes, or in some instances, it could be a little bit. But these tax credits are sold by tax credit syndicators over a ten-year period. And you can see as part of the financial pro forma for this site that the Walters Group anticipates receiving over fourteen million dollars upfront for development construction purposes. And this fourteen million is, will be, the tax credits will be sold over a ten-year period. And so, but the developer would achieve upfront fourteen million dollars. Because these low-income housing tax funds are so competitive, HMFA has set up a scoring system and to really be able to see what sites score well. And in this instance, the sites score well, as you can imagine, if they are in sewer service area, if they're in sewer service areas. In this case, Planning Area Two. Tax credit developers are, can easily expend one fifty thousand to three hundred thousand dollars to apply for the funding, to get site plan approvals. And HMFA does, as part of the regulations governing tax credits, which are called a qualified outlay plan, QAP, HMFA does limit the amount of a developer's fee for a tax credit developer. I would say over the last fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years, the tax credit program has changed dramatically in the sense of what's required by a municipality. Whereas fifteen, twenty years ago, towns just had to work with a developer to help them find a site. But often, the developers could purchase the site and really wouldn't need any outlay of funds from a municipality. Would typically just need a pilot, a payment in lieu of tax. But over time, the, again, the program has become much more competitive. And ultimately, towns, I'd say, you know, ten to fifteen years ago, really had to start to fund the purchase of sites. And then, you know, since the recession and more recently, towns have had to provide more than just sometimes funding of land to be able to donate the land so that the developer did not have the land costs as part of their pro forma. But more recently, we saw, especially with the dramatic interest rates and construction costs, that towns have had to, even just recently, provide multiple millions of dollars to assist the tax credit developer. But ultimately, the hearing that just in just this site, the development pro forma of just under nineteen million dollars with hopefully fourteen coming from tax credits, as well as the site would be eligible or able to support a small mortgage. It's important to, for Cranberry Township, to the developer, to score as high as possible, hopefully a proper or potentially, potentially the highest score possible. And that includes the purchase of the site. Next slide, please. So similar to the CHA site at Cranberry Commons, I've fully set forth an housing element and fair share plan draft that I believe that the twelve-seventy-four South River Road senior site does present a realistic opportunity, that it is, again, sewer service area, in Planning Area Two. There will be an agreement with the developer, with the Walters Group. And the ordinance adopted by the township last month, in May, does provide the township, I'm sorry, the Walters Group with the ability to acquire the site through the donation of the site to the Walters Group. And I do find that the site is available and approvable through rezoning. And again, as a fund, I find that the site is suitable and available for affordable housing production. Going on to the next slide. This site, as many of you are aware, is one-two-three-four South River Road. It's at the northern end of South River Road, just south of Monterey Township. And the site, the site block two point oh one, block one. The total site's up twenty-one acres. It is farmed. The township's plan is to acquire the southern half of the site, about eleven point five acres, and specifically not to include the existing farmhouse and not to include the existing farm accessory structures. The Walters Group anticipates, and the township, we anticipate, a total of one hundred and thirty million affordable housing units built, again, in two phases on the site. The southern portion, sorry, the first phase of the two-phase development would be seventy-two units. And again, the second phase would be fifty-eight. The Walters Group will also provide community building and active and passive recreation, which will be detailed and set forth in site plan application. The township anticipates acquiring them through negotiation or the paying of fair market value through eminent domain. Eminent domain is permitted to be used to acquire the site as one hundred percent affordable. Housing is a public purpose. As the township will acquire and donate the site, the township is eligible for the forty-six fourth round bonuses. The site will be rezoned from light industrial to multifamily residential. The site, as you can see here on the aerial map, is surrounded by existing businesses. Some of the businesses that are in the housing plan, and as many of you may know, include a tile slayer. a tile slayer, a warehouse for heating and plumbing equipment, a cabinet maker, a plumbing service company. The, in addition, the site is surrounded to the north by the existing, by the existing farmland of the Henry Farm. So across South River Road, the site is, will be across from a future large ware development on the Alfery site. It's been approved for, again, for two large warehouses. But this site is really at the north corner of the Alfery property, which will approve to their approved site plan. This is a location of berms, the Stormwater Basin, where the front of the warehouse structure is to the southwest of this site, approximately 600, and the structure's, proposed structure will be about 600 feet from the proposed affordable housing buildings. As part of the design process of this site, Walters Group will utilize buffering, landscaping, berms, fencing, sound attenuation. And these types of measures could include enhanced insulation, enhanced windows, doors above building code requires. The Walters Group, again, will seek 9% low-income housing tax credit financing for this site, as previously noted, as well as for the senior site at 1274 South River Road. But for this, at 1234 South River Road, the financial pro forma anticipates the site will cost a total of $45 million with phase one at $25.6 million, and the second phase at $19.5 million. And the vast majority of the, of this, of these development costs will be tax credit financing from HMFA. It's important to note this site scores very well for tax credit financing. It has a public transit along South River Road through the Middlesex County Ride Program. And this ride service serves the, from New Brunswick to Jamesburg, and comes right in front of the site during morning and evening rush hour. Experience, especially over these last 20, about 20 or so years, maybe even just even a bit more recently, I've seen many of sites like this that is in a suburban location and these types of sites where the low and moderate income households truly will need cars, although there will be some, again, some success to the bus service provided by Middlesex County, that in order to help the residents of the community access the part of the township and access, you know, services and the shops and be part of the village, again, there are many recent experience that low and moderate income households do own cars in these situations. And really, for all of the affordable housing existing in township, the, there is no mass transit in the other areas of Cranberry Township. This is, this is really a mass transit desert in Middlesex County. And so oftentimes, low and moderate income households to try to access jobs requires really households to have private vehicles. And more recently, I'm seeing that low and moderate income households also rely on ride-sharing services such as Uber or Lyft and so forth. It is really, again, it's not just Cranberry facing this issue. It is, you know, many, many towns across the state where low and moderate income households are seeing jobs really leave the urban center, which have, are well-served by public transit. And so it's important for low and moderate income households to be able to traverse from really suburban to suburban locations that are not served by mass transit. It's not just a Cranberry Township circumstance. Part of the scoring, in addition to the limited, but available mass transit opportunity or bus transit opportunities, at least Monday to Friday during rush hour, both afternoon rush hour, that again, the site scores well for tax credit financing, as the site is in an existing sewer service area. And also importantly, it scores because Cranberry's schools are really top-notch. And it, the school system not only helps the site score well, but the schools really are an important service to any low and moderate income household that lives anywhere in township, that they have access to this important household requirement for good schools. It is in planning area two, smart growth area. And next slide, please. The site, do you believe that the site does present a realistic opportunity for the provision of affordable housing? Site is in existing sewer service area, it's in PA two. The township will count in, will entertain and enter into agreement with the Walters Group. And through the ordinance adopted last month, the township does have the ability to acquire the site. Next slide, please. The housing element and fair share plan also requires other statutory points to be addressed, such as the requirements for very low-income housing. Again, that was a relatively new requirement, and all of the new affordable housing elements in the township will address the required very low-income housing. The township's existing court-approved fair share ordinance and development fee ordinance will be amended at such time as the DCA Department of Community Affairs and the UHAC regulations are in final form. Township has a court-approved affirmative marketing plan, initially preliminarily updated, and will be updated again when the affirmative marketing regulations are for the fourth round. Township has a proposed spending plan. And currently, the township's affordable housing trust fund has approximately $2.5 million in it. We project the township collecting over the fourth round tenure, again, for the next, through the next 10 years, we project another $4.2 million to be collected for a total of $6.7 million. The funds will acquire the various sites. And at this point, we anticipate that the township will also potentially have to bond to acquire the fourth round site, as well as also pay off bonding for some of the third round sites as well. That concludes the slides of the show. I would like to just offer the board my recommendation, and we'll go off the slide, PowerPoint's point. And I would recommend to the board that the draft housing element and fair share plan be tonight. I do believe that it addresses the amended Fair Housing Act, and I believe it addresses the municipal land use law as well as the Mount Laurel doctrine. The plan allows the township to continue to achieve its master plan goals of its constitutional affordable housing obligation. And as summarized in my testimony tonight and in the plan, I do believe the fourth round plan is in the public interest, and it promotes general welfare. That concludes my testimony, and I'm happy to answer any questions from the board.
Thank you very good for your presentation. What I would like to do before I open it up to the public, again, we're going to kind of get everybody's questions and try to answer them at the end of the public session. Mary Beth, you could definitely hang on then, right, for us, and the board will probably have some questions afterwards, so.
Oh, definitely.
Okay. I want to take a five-minute break, okay, because I have to go to the bathroom. Long story, I had to, had a dental procedure today, and I had to take numerous medications for a hip replacement surgery. Be right back. We're going to open the public portion of the meeting. Again, when you come up, please state your name and address for the record, and we'll record that. And again, we'll try to, we'll try to collect all the questions and then answer everything at the end, so Mary Beth, you could take notes too on that, please. Yeah, and everybody, you have three minutes, and then we will move on to the next person. So, and you don't be tarding that.
I'm Amanda, and I live on South Winkle Street.
What's the address again?
South Winkle Street.
What number?
61, directly across from the 24 units.
Okay.
So my name's Amanda Uwaz, directly across from the proposed Cranberry Commons affordable housing site. I just start with being clear that I support affordable housing, but I don't support the way the township committee went about creating the proposed plan. Out of the township's fair share plan, a 24-unit affordable housing development is proposed on less than one acre of land in Cranberry Commons. Until just nine days ago, there was no mention of this in any township updates, any FAQs or any meetings. Suddenly, we report a $1.68 million purchase for a high-density project, potentially housing more than 50 residents, without any visible studies or due diligence on how this will affect traffic, safety, infrastructure, or quality of life in the area. To put this into perspective, The Willows, an affordable housing development from round three, also has 24 units, but it's built on three acres. What's proposed here is density, and it sets a precedent, we need to What's proposed here is density and it sets a precedent we need to consider very carefully. I have re-concerned about this specific property for over a year, trash, traffic noise, the intersection at Old Trent Road and South Main is dangerous, there's red light when speeding, and legal U-turns that happen daily. I've heard multiple crashes from inside mall, crossing guards witness it every day, and the traffic study that was promised when the gateway townhomes were completed was never done. We're inviting a tragedy if we don't address it now. Beyond traffic, the site has ongoing issues, oak glowing trash, no gated dumpsters, light and noise pollution, and persistent zoning violations. A high-density project will only intensify these issues. This is the fourth proposed change to this plan since I've lived here. During the high-gate development planning process, which this parcel is a part of, residents showed up, gave feedback, and engaged. Input should still matter, but it feels like every time we try to keep up, decisions are already being made on us. So I ask why this site? What other properties were considered and who made the final decision for this site? Yes, the Willows could be a good fit for affordable housing, but not at this density. This isn't a box. It's about thoughtful planning, transparency, and respect for the people who live here, along with those that we hope to welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Who else would like to come up and say something?
Is it response to her?
We're collecting, we're collecting that.
Sorry. I'm Dave Carroll, 26th Drive. I was speaking to, come on, just a couple of things. I just wanted to confirm two things, questions, and I'm surprised by our expert here didn't. Thank you very much for your presentation. I would just ask, this is pretty big numbers. You would like open and close your presentations maybe with just how much it's going to cost in total, you know, so people can get to the net quicker ahead. And so I just want to confirm that, so someone, I don't know if you can answer my question now or not. I think it's about $75 million for four land purchases, right? So it'd be something like that. This is a big number, so I think, you know, we should talk about, we should just let people know it's a big number, this one. And two, to Amanda's comment, I've lived there, at Leaky Drive for a couple of years. We heard the same thing, the same song and dance. Sorry, we had this, you know, that site there was an eyesore, so we turned around and redeveloped it and the deal was cut in the middle of the night and the land was all of a sudden sold and redeveloped and townhouses showed up. And the next thing we had a strip wall with east cigarette signs and everything and all the trash, like she said, and nothing done. And now we're going to turn around and jam, I think it's a three-story building right at the corner. And people who live in that area, be however far away you are, are going to be able to see the top, I think, I just want to give you. So my questions are, just confirm the height of this building, right? I support, I support this housing. I think it makes sense if people have to live. So I think you have to be sensible about it, especially when you take a step back and say, this is $100 million, it's a big number. So how high is the building going to be? And is it really $100 million, whatever the right number is, right? And finally, can we switch instead of the old people on the other side of 130? I mean, that's like, you know, I would want my grandmother to be over there. You're on the other side of 130 and you flip the other people, flip them over there, maybe? That's the third question. So that's all I think. Is there a strike?
Yes, we are. Thank you for your, your comment too. Who else would like to come make a comment?
Hi, Andy Henry, 34 South Hoover Road. The little property has been causing so much excitement lately, lately. So I don't want to miss any opportunity to speak.
Could you just use the mic?
So I don't want to miss an opportunity to speak against our property being taken by eminent domain. In that regard, I'd like to read a letter that was sent to the town, which I also received a copy of. I've been given permission to read it. From West Haven, Connecticut, quote, "I am writing you to please consider the use of eminent domain to seize the Henry family farm in Cranberry. It is wrong to seize private property for other than public use. The construction is not public use. Public use would be highway, firehouse, school, or the like. Over the years and subsequent to the Kelo Supreme Court decision, the definition of public use has been eroded, so now virtually any of us can be used to take someone's home." This lady lives in West Haven, Connecticut. In 2015, the city started a process to demolish an entire neighborhood of over 50 homes, small businesses, and a church to make way for a shopping center. The neighborhood was not blighted. A consulting firm have to municipal development plan, which made the case that this taking was legal under Connecticut law. However, in Connecticut, the law is so poorly written that a case can be made to take property for a reason. Clever wordsmithing does the trick. Today, in 2025, 10 years later, the referenced property of 23 sits desolate and empty. The shopping center was never built and ironically, it probably revert to housing someday. In New London, Connecticut, the property which was the subject of the Kelo decision by the Supreme Court also stands empty. The FISA Corporation, one of the original beneficiaries, moved out after its tax credits expired. Please don't let Cranberry join the ever-growing list of municipalities making these ill-formed and catastrophic decisions, which pervert the intent of the law and wind up doing more harm than good. "On quote, and we believe the taking over a farm would just be a catastrophic decision. Putting housing there would essentially create a separate town, I'd call it Cranberry. We believe there must be other locations in town with willing sellers outside of this warehouse zone. And we have filed a complaint with Superior Court of New Jersey today about this effort." Thank you.
My name's Tim Brennan, 10 Park Place Eastside. I think I know everybody that's here. One thing that was missed out on the Henry farm as far as businesses that surround it, which just concerns me as a citizen, is that there is a marijuana dispensary about 200-something yards away. I did a little video about it. I stood many times in the driveway next to the house and you can smell the marijuana probably for eight to 10 hours a day by the dispensaries owner. I think it's nine o'clock to seven o'clock. I started reading, I know I had a day off from school on Friday, and I started reading the 500 and some odd pages of this, looking at the pictures, which were great, informative. I got to page 57 and my reading comprehension skills kind of blocked me. So I'm going to ask a couple of things here. Was there a competitive bid process for selecting the Walters Group? Apparently, I'm not saying this is guaranteed, but appears to have a $60 million construction cost, regardless of whether tax credits are received. Additionally, around, I'm estimating this, and it's probably a little older than this, but around $8 million, $6 million title in Henry property, is listed under a development, a developer's fee, appendix S. I don't know what that means, but that can be clarified, it'd be great. If the expected tax credits fall through, it's my understanding, and again, it's just my re-comprehension, so take it for what it works, I just see fourth grade, the town could be responsible to pay millions and millions of dollars for this, if they don't receive a tax credit from the government. So that could be, you know, just to verify, that would be great. That just leaves me the same question, how much is it all going to cost me then? So, unfortunately, my wife had surgery the other day, I'm going to head home, but I will listen to the rest of the meeting from home. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. I know I'm breaking protocol here. I know I'm breaking protocol here before you go home, hope your wife is okay. But regarding the marijuana facility, they're building a new facility off of Burke Yard Road, so they're going to be moving the facility to the facility on Burke Yard Road. It's that big green house model with the thing on Burke Yard Road that they've been working on and leave that. So they're going to be moving from there over to the other facility.
Thank you.
Your other questions will be addressed. I just wanted to let, let everybody know that. All right, who else would like to please come up?
Hello, Brady Smith, 17 New Orleans Avenue. Again, I'm also not opposed to affordable housing. I think it's important and I want to state that off, off the record, or on the record. And also, I'm here on Inter Consulting, who's working with the New Jersey Farm Bureau. And I just had one question as it relates to the 50 sites that were mentioned. I believe you said all the 50 sites were at for suitability. And I wanted to know if potentially the suitable 9.9-acre site across from the Henry farm was considered. It's block one, block 10, and it's owned by a property developer. So I'm curious if that was one of the 50 considered. If it wasn't, why was that not considered? Thank you.
Thank you for your question. Where were you from again? I'm sorry.
17 New Orleans Avenue. Let me do my answer.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Like I said, I'm here representing others.
That's fine, thank you. Who else would like to come up and ask a question?
Am I using this correctly? Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I'm Anne Studholm. I'm a lawyer with Post Pollen of the Roseland. I live in Hightstown, Row 9, South Main Street. And I've worked with Mary Beth years on many towns. She's an excellent planner, very, very good planner on this. It's my understanding, Mary Beth, that I don't know if they had told you about me and my home here, which would have just started on June 5th. Did they, you know about that?
Go ahead and ask your questions, please.
My friend, I'm saying, did you know about my involvement since June 5th? I want to take it for my surprise, if this is new here. This is public domain. Okay, so not knowing whether the planning or not of the site, and I have to permission, I know to talk about my client's site. I was delighted to see the maps. In Mary Beth's expectation, that yes, correct, we are not in farmland preservation and Mary Beth knows, but you know, my analysis of the easement is it's absolutely up to Cranberry. You have no turns, you can have your site. We submitted a formal, three and a half pages, single spaced. I understand your attorney hasn't had a chance to read it, but it just came in just before noon last Friday, because I had all my ducks in a row. We are proposing whatever the town allowed to sign. We have 47 acres to work with, between one and 10. If the town felt they were constrained to do just one percent site, we could do that. We have highly, highly experienced development team and we are not going to require bonding. The bonding backup is, is a potential mechanism such as bonding, potentially include bonding if necessary, under the laws, in case a group like Walters Development is going for live tech funding, doesn't get their funding. It used to be COA, now it's the program, TCA, wants to ensure that there's a reasonable possibility, that this isn't just some sort of wish fulfillment. We're confident that we don't require the town to bond, although we like what Walters apparently has requested. Our site is former Plainsboro, it is very conveniently located, it's excellent for live tech tax credits, we can do it as a 100% project, we can do it as a 50% project, depending on what other mechanisms the town still wants to use. I say, you guys know I was here on June 5th, because we only got a letter on May 29th from Mr. Van Heiss saying, oh, we still live, but unfortunately, it has an agricultural reason. It's a very illegal agricultural reason, it sells itself for a dollar, those rights have not been sold. We are adjacent to a sewer property. I believe we're in a sewer service area. The map I looked at, we are, but it's certainly suitable, available, developable, approvable, and the owner and my client, who would be the developer, and we also would work with Mr. Rukowski, and talk to him. So in the just couple of weeks that it's been pending, we've gotten all the ducks in a row. I have not heard any response from anyone, from the town's lawyers, from Mr. Van Heiss. He's an old friend of mine, I have not referred to Mary Beth, so I don't wish to hear about the site. I just want to say, we're ready, we're available. My letter discusses the other sites, I don't have to do that from here, but I do wish that we would get someone reaching out, either to say, no, we're very sorry, in case we'll have to go ahead with the challenge, or we'd love to talk to you. Why not? We're saying that we'd love to hear your opinion. Okay, I don't think, I tried to be at the end, so that I wasn't taking anybody else's time. And also, again, I'm, you know, we're offering to save the town tens of billions of dollars. And also to not take the farm, they claim you have to take and you don't want to. I would think that since June 5th, someone would have responded to me.
So I'm going to give you a brief response. As discussed at the TC meeting last night, which you were there, respectfully said, we just received your letter on Friday afternoon, and we said when we get through this week, we'd be happy to get in touch with you and discuss with you. That's the response you got last night at the township committee meeting.
I just want to make sure that that is still, in fact, basically what the chair said at the beginning of this week.
Given 24 hours later, that is still the case. So we'll get through this week and then we'll add detergents on your letter that we received.
Excellent, and I would love the opportunity to talk to Mary Beth about it as soon as you see that we're ready to do so.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any? Anybody else have any comments or questions they'd like to post? Okay, I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting and have Mary Beth try to answer some of those questions. Should we read, we could read them back if you'd like.
Certainly, or I'm happy to, however you'd like to read, Mr. Chairman.
One of the first questions that was asked was, why was the Cranberry Commons site picked as no other sites considered?
Many, many. CHA, as well as the Walters Group and the township team, looked at dozens and dozens of sites. I wanted to, if I may, start to answer other of the questions raised by Ms. Yuhas, that to be clear, the Willows and Birchwood site along, the old Paul's Auto Garage site along West Side of Route 130, that is a three-point acre site, but that houses 90 total housing units, including one phase is 24 affordable family rental units and one phase is 66 senior and special needs units. So that, that density is 23 units to the acre on the Inger Mills and Birchwood site. But to be, to go back to the initial question, dozens and dozens of sites. I don't know how many specific sites CHA looked at and I know from conversations with Mark Rukowski that he probably and his team at CHA probably looked at 10, 20, 30 sites. probably looked at 10, 20, 30 sites, potentially even more.
How was it if there was 10, 20, 30 sites? How was this specific area chosen? Because the township is in litigation.
I'm unable to hear.
She's asking.
Am I allowed to come back up?
She's asking, how was this site chosen? The township's in litigation with this owner.
I did speak with Mark, actually yesterday, and maybe there were other sites for this particular 25 unit. Why are those not shared with the public, number one? Number two, nobody had any idea about this particular unit being put up until, what, June 13th, when the plan came out. You guys talked about 1234 and 1274, and I don't agree with that either, taking the farm. But that is what everybody talked about. There was no talk at all about this particular parcel being taken. I had contact with the township council regarding this particular lot, because I'm directly across the street from it. And I had to find out that this was going up across the street from me by finding the document and flipping 360 pages. Okay, I've been in direct contact with members of the TC office, and I had no idea. We moved here based on a plan, and we attended meetings based on that high-day plan. And it changed over and over and over again. Okay, so I, again, I'm not into affordable housing. It's a great actual spot for affordable housing. If you look where I live, there's affordable housings scattered all around my house. That's not the issue. The issue is two units there. And it seems like it was chosen because of the litigation of Cranberry Towns owner and Cranberry Township.
I don't know if this is the way you noted these questions too. Next, I wanted to know the total cost of the projects and also the height of the building on the, do we have that yet?
Yeah, let us just start with the height of the building. CHA does propose a story building at the corner of Ultra and Road and South Main. The total cost is, South Main, 75 million dollars, or actually, at least 75 million, just because we don't know the land cost for two of those sites. But to be clear, the vast majority, over $70 million, is anticipated to be coming from the Low England Housing Tax Credit Program through HMFA for both the senior site as well as for the family site. And the CHA is from the DCA and for the CHA site. At this point, the township is anticipated to cover the cost of land acquisition, approximately 1.7 or 1.8 million for the CHA site. And unknown values for the 1234 South River Road and the 1274 South River Road. So, to be clear, the township anticipates having land costs with the vast, vast majority of this 75 million to plus financial pro forma for all three sites to be covered by federal programs, state programs, county programs, taking back a daywork and then so forth.
And the height, Mary Beth, of the CHA property on the corner? I believe it's 45 feet, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't know the actual height of the building.
It's not supposed to be any higher than the building that's right next to it.
I'm not certain about the specific.
The agreement, can you hear me on this line or not?
Yes.
Away? Okay. That the agreement I believe we have in place that can be confirmed is that it cannot be any higher than the existing Cranberry Commons structure that is in place today.
I had worry about, another question was, what are you going on the other side of 130?
That's where the sites are right now.
What does that mean? Decision made?
It's where the sites are and what's going to be put there. We're not changing the sites.
Okay. How'd you come up with that?
A number of things. And let me just interject something here while we're still trying to these questions. The planning board was not involved in any of the process here. The township committee and their consultants prepared this plan, okay? We saw it about the same time as everybody else has, all right?
The consultants.
Let me just be clear. The township committee did not have to involve a planning board by any means or anything like that. And the township committee adhered very strictly to their confidentiality and they have properties and everything, and not releasing any information. So who knows in the back? They did not, you know, break silence or break any confidentiality rules in landing, you know, evaluations. Okay, so with all this, along with everybody else. And the planning board has to, you know, evaluate it based on the plan that we see. Again, there's not going to be any changing of the sites or switching one thing or other, okay, right now.
But your public is speaking to you.
No, the public is speaking to us. But the plan is, as I said from the beginning, the plan is what you see is what's going to be evaluated tonight.
What's the point of all the comment?
It's an opportunity for you to make public comment.
It's a joke.
It's making a record. And who were the consultants? CHA was a consultant. Mary Beth's had to do with competitive bidding, but the planning board's not going to be able to answer that. Respectful developers that were chosen.
Yeah, I can just briefly say, the fair housing allows a selection of a developer. It doesn't have to be through literal bidding.
So what happens also, just for the record, what happens if we don't get, developer doesn't get tax credits? Township bonds for short haul?
So, in my experience, and again, I have been doing this for 25 years, just focused on affordable housing. HMFA Housing Works Finance Agency that operates the tax credit for affordable housing currently anticipates that anyone who are any development that may not win an award in one round, the following round. So for instance, the municipality may be able to assist in helping that developer score better on a tiebreaker system, may be able to contribute additional funds, or may be able to assist in other ways for the developer. I have seen cases where tax credit developers get an award after the second or third attempt. You should know that tax credits, again, is a competitive program, and there is one time a year to apply. And it's not unheard of for developers to have to apply multiple times. Having said that, there is, there are other sources of funds. The state of New Jersey recently utilized funds in concert with another HMFA funding source called the Tax Exempt Bond Financing. It's also known as the 1% tax credit, as opposed to the more competitive 9%. And so the state of New Jersey had funds, and I understand that, and these funds were called the Affordable Housing Production Fund. And I understand that that source of funds may be funded, again, for, in addition to what was already utilized. And the Affordable Housing Production Funds was used by HMFA, as well as the 4% tax credits to virtually offer the same type of funding that the 9% program. There are other avenues for funds, and ultimately, the, yes, the township will have to, the community body will have to adopt a resolution of its intent to fund, intention through bonding, any shortfall. But the hope is through the selection of the Walters Group, a very experienced tax credit developer, who virtually every year that I have researched, every year I've researched the awardees of the tax credit funds. And for years and years, the Walters Group does funding. They're not going to expend, you know, 250,000, 300,000 dollars, thinking they won't fund. But specifically, there are many other avenues for funding. And ultimately, yes, the township is the backstop. But even if only 4% tax exempt bond financing, that could easily fund a large percentage of the known $75 million cost. I do not know the specific amount that the township may have to bond if all else fails. But the township will continue to assist all of the developers, whether it's CHA or the Walters Group, in being as successful as possible with the funding.
There's a question regarding a developer's fee, and there was a reference to Appendix X. Appendix X is a fair share ordinance, so I'm not quite sure if they were just asking.
I think that was S. Is it Sam?
I'm sorry, Sam. Okay. They're looking for the developer's fee on Super Form, for the 1234 South River Road then.
Yeah, so the, as I testified a bit, the Low England Housing Tax Credit Program does permit any developer to reutilize or factor in a development fee for their efforts. It's a lot of time, it's a lot of, it's, you know, 45-year period of controls for this. So it's a long-term effort of development, fund, receiving funding, getting a site plan approval, getting all outside aid with approvals, going ahead and constructing, you know, constructing the units and the long-term administration. So HMFA has always permitted a developer's fee. It is capped. And whatever the fee listed in the pro forma, that is the capped amount that any tax credit developer, including Ingerman in the third round. I virtually have at least one tax credit site in all of my housing plans across the state. So it's not unusual, and it is a known amount as permitted by HMFA.
There was one more question about why did the town look at the 9.9 acre farm across from block 10?
I don't have a specific answer for that, but I'm happy to provide the board and the resident with the answer to that.
You actually answered it earlier, the Ari's property, which is in full site. Yeah, you actually answered it earlier. If you just want to repeat that site again.
Thank you. So that site was approved, I'm going to say, it came in for amended approval approximately three years ago for, I'm not to say, don't quote me, but approximately 2 million square feet of warehousing, two warehouses. I think previously it was going to be a multiple series of buildings, but the approval's amended. So there is full approval on that site. That's what I'd like to say about that site.
Can I speak further?
No, I'm not going to open up the public portion again.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, if the board has any question, Mary Beth, that they'd like to ask, please feel free to do so. I have one question for Mary Beth. Given the nature of all the towns that you're now currently working with and everything, what are the chances, if this plan didn't get approved tonight, what are the chances that the town would be sued with a builder's remedy lawsuit?
I think it's 100% chance.
So, in other words, we're saying that, and given past nature of what's going on with the state, we're looking at doubling basically the size of town here, if that happens.
And thank you for saying it that way. So, and I meant to cover that, that the township purposely, for decades now, has purposely worked with Cranberry Housing Associates and other developers for 100% affordable housing sites. It's just, you're addressing your obligation with just affordable housing units, for the most part. And you're exactly right, Mr. Chairman, any builder's remedy lawsuit, also known as exclusionary zoning lawsuit, those lawsuits will be accompanied by an inclusionary development, where there's mainly market rate units. And typically, the courts have permitted anywhere from 80% market rate to even 85% market rate units for rental affordable inclusionary development. And so you're just getting a small portion, the total development as affordable. And Mr. Chairman, you're exact that we can do the math. Even I can do the math, probably even in my head, that, you know, to address 265 total affordable units, the township wouldn't have access to, you know, potentially have access to bonuses and such. But, you know, that 265 divided even by 20%, you're looking at 1300, maybe I can't do the math in my head, but you're looking at clearly 1300 to 1400 total housing unit to produce 20% set aside just the 265 affordable units.
Okay, thank you. I just, again, I wanted to clarify that, because that's an important part of, going to be our decision.
And what's the current, what was our current housing?
About 1300 units. So we will literally double the units in town. And, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, you're talking about utilizing a land mass, probably 300, 400 acres, you know, in size to develop that?
Oh, no, well, potentially more. Yeah, it really depends, but it's, it would be catastrophic for the township.
Thank you.
Excuse me, could you repeat what your point was? I didn't get it.
If we don't approve this plan tonight, then we will be.
Subject to that.
Subject to that, which will be 100%.
And one more question.
As it stands right now, we have a deadline. The township has a deadline to pass this plan by June 30th. We don't have time to amend it, to do anything at this point. This is a plan to protect the township, basically, from builder's remedies. And, you know, whatever happens after that, fine, but we have to get it filed. And, you know, whatever happens after that, fine, but we have to get it filed. We've got a deadline, and it's a court post deadline. Many municipalities have tried to go before courts to get that deadline extended. Nobody's been successful thus far. And so this is what we have to work with. We have to, you know, abide by the law, and that's what we're doing, so.
I mean, maybe I'm out of, um, I just want to reiterate what Wayne said at the beginning. As a planning board, we, for obvious reasons, important reasons, we were involved in these cases. And your question, the builder's remedy, has been my biggest concern throughout this process because we can't have another thirteen hundred houses. That'll crush us. Additionally, so if I do my math, Mary Beth, if we have thirteen hundred plus thirteen hundred in ten
I'm sorry, I've lost. Are you?
If we do, if I do my math, thirteen hundred plus thirteen hundred is twenty six hundred.
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Start your message.
It was a cheerleader at one point. If I do my math, thirteen hundred plus thirteen hundred is twenty six hundred in ten years down the road, we're going to be in a situation where we do another twenty percent. So we're going to be adding five hundred potentially additionally.
There won't be an ounce of land left in this town. Nothing.
And then my other question is, I, for point, I hope, is that once, whatever ends up getting approved and goes forward, will the planning board have need to have, you know, due or due diligence like we always do for everything from a sign on the turnpike to, you know, to whatever? Just praying that we have that opportunity.
Yes, and that's an excellent point that you just brought up, and I was going to actually bring that up, um, at the end here, but I'll bring, you, you asked a question. Board will be heavily involved with each one of the sites in planning like we have always been. Down to, you know, curving color of the front door, everything and in between. So, um, just because it goes, if, if it does get passed and if it goes to the next step, we will be involved with each one of the sites in the site development process. You know, where the, where the, um, drainage system is, the driveways, the runoff, parking light size, lighting, vermin, soup to nuts, just like we do with any, any site that comes before us. Okay, so yes, we will have, you know, one hundred percent input on that and, and approval process too. So it's not going to be just, you know, you know, you got it and off and walk off to the races now. Now, caveat on that, is the builder's remedy lawsuit, we're going to sit here and twiddle our thumbs because we'll be cut out of the entire process. We will have no input. This board, this town, you know, you'll have a judge or a magistrate being the planning board, okay? So that, that's, that's the caveat here. Does any other board members have any questions? All right. Given that there's no other questions by the board, I'm going to have Sharon read a resolution.
This is a resolution approving and adopting a housing element and fair share plan to satisfy the township's fourth round affordable housing obligation. Whereas on March twentieth, twenty twenty four, Governor Murphy signed into law P.L. J. twenty four, chapter two, establishing a new framework for determining and instituting municipalities' affordable housing obligations under the New Jersey Supreme Court's Mount Laurel Doctrine and the New Jersey Fair Housing Act, N.J.S.A. fifth colon twenty seven, D dash three oh one, et cetera. And whereas pursuant to the same site, amendment section F one B, each municipality was to adopt a binding resolution no later than January thirty first, twenty twenty five, determining its present and prospective fair share obligation for the fourth round of affordable housing obligations, uh, fourth round. And whereas the township committee of the township of Cranberry adopted resolution R one dash five twenty three on January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, identifying its present and prospective fair share obligations for the fourth round as follows. Present need zero, prospective need two sixty five. Whereas, in accordance with the FHA and Administrative Directive number fourteen dash twenty four issued by the Administrative Office of the Courts on December thirteenth, twenty twenty four, the township filed a complaint for declaratory judgment in the matter declaratory judgment action of the township of Cranberry, Middlesex County pursuant to P.L. twenty twenty four, chapter two, docket number M I D L five seven two twenty five on January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, identifying its present and prospective fair share obligations for the fourth round as set above and its committing to adopting and submitting a fourth round housing element and fair share plan as required by the FHA. And whereas on March fourteenth, twenty twenty five, the Honorable Thomas Demaske G.A.S.C. issued an order fixing municipal obligations for present, present need and prospective need for the fourth round in accordance with the obligation as set forth above and authorizing the township to receive with preparation and adoption of proposed housing element fair share plan. And whereas pursuant to the statute that I already, um, mentioned before, now section F two A, directive fourteen twenty four, each municipality must file and, and as part of its DJ action, a housing element fair share plan and proposed drafts of the appropriate zoning and other ordinances and resolutions to implement its prospective obligations no later than June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. And whereas Mary Beth Lonergan, A.I.C.P.P., and Eric Harris, M.C.R.P. of Clark, Catan Hints, prepared and proposed housing element fair share plan on behalf of the municipality, gives you the full title, for the fourth round, township of Cranberry, dated June thirteenth, twenty twenty five. And whereas pursuant to N.J.S.A. forty colon fifty five, D dash twenty eight, the township planning board in its capacity as a planning board may prepare and adopt or the master plan or component parts thereof after a public hearing to guide the use of the lands within the municipality in a manner which promotes the health and safety and general welfare. And whereas upon notice duly provided pursuant to N.J.S.A. forty colon fifty five, D dash thirteen, the Cranberry Township Planning Board held a public hearing on the twenty twenty five fourth round housing element fair share plan on June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, during which the fourth round housing element fair share plan was presented to the board in public and opportunity for comments and questions were provided. And whereas upon the conclusion of the public hearing and as required, to assist the municipality in meeting its constitutional obligations as provided by the New Jersey Supreme Court, the board determined that the proposed fourth round housing element fair share plan is designed to achieve the goal of access to affordable house to meet present and prospective housing needs in accordance with N.J.S.A. fifty two, colon twenty seven, D dash three ten. And whereas during the hearing, Ms. Lonergan testified that the paragraph labeled, quote, "approvable," quote, on pages eight and seventy one of the proposed fourth round housing element fair share plan should rise to state that both sites may be either rezoned or subject to the redevelopment statute. And whereas by the adoption of this resolution, the board memorialized adoption of the proposed fourth round housing element fair share plan as the element fair share plan components of the Cranberry Township Master Plan in accordance with N.J.S.A. forty, colon fifty five, D dash twenty eight, the FHA and directive forty four. Now, therefore be resolved by the Cranberry Township Planning Board as follows. Number one, the above recitals are incorporated and made part hereof as is set forth in the herein. Two, the board hereby approves and adopts the fourth round housing element and fair share plan and acts here to, as exhibit A, the twenty twenty five housing element and fair share plan components of the Cranberry Township Master Plan with amendments to pages fifty eight and seventy one to provide that both sites may be either rezoned or subject to the redevelopment statute as testified to, Ms. Lonergan. And, uh, number three, the board secretary shall forthwith cause notice of the adoption of this resolution and the fourth round housing element share plan to be published in the official newspapers of the township. The secretary is, um, authorized and directed to transmit a copy of the adopted fourth round fair share plan and certified copy of this resolution to the township clerk, township committee of the township of Cranberry. The board recommends that the fourth round housing element fair share plan, share plan be reviewed and endorsed by the township committee of the township of Cranberry for submission to the court in connection with the township DJ action in accordance with the Fair Housing Act and directive fourteen dash twenty four. Clark, Catan Hints is hereby authorized and directed to provide a copy of the adopted fourth round housing element fair share plan and a certified copy of this resolution to the county planning boards and New Jersey Office of Planning Advocacy in accordance with requirements, N.J.S.A. forty, colon fifty five, D dash thirteen, and this resolution shall take effect immediately.
All right. You motion to approve the resolution as stated? Can I have a second, please? Will the secretary please call the roll?
All right. Roll call for resolution approving and adopting the fourth round housing element and fair share plan. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Dobby?
Yes.
Mr. Giddings?
Yes.
Ms. Kinnear?
Yes.
Mr. Muselli?
Yes.
And Mr. Whit.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I know this has not been easy. No round of affordable housing that this town has had to tackle has been easy, not one. I'm hoping that we all work together and put together a good plan as, as stated in this plan and make it work for, for our community. And hope that, that as we move forward into the process, that again, people conduct themselves in a civil manner and not resort to threats or violence or any, you know, derogatory comment toward, you know, my board or the CHA committee. So again, thank you very much. And as I mentioned, when, you know, if and when the state approves our plan, this is the next step. We get to send it in and it's up to them to see what they're going to do. At that point in time, if they do approve it, then we will go ahead and start the planning process because from my understanding, we have to have a shovel-ready project in years. So there's not going to be a lot of time. Every, and everybody will be invited to the, you know, we'll make full notice of, you know, when we're going to be discussing plans so people can come in and, you know, look at the plans and the comments, questions or modifications as we see fit. And thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. I appreciate your time in this matter. Oh, and any motion to adjourn the meeting? Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.